This action is taken as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the governor's orders regarding limiting of gatherings and staying in place during a disaster. Electronic participation is encouraged, and pursuant to the governor's emergency orders, a maximum of 10 people will be allowed to be physically present. If you choose to be physically present, you will be screened by authorized staff for signs and symptoms of illness. Based on the results of that screening, certain physical attendees may be denied entry. The following members are physically present at this time: Mr. Richard Granger, Ms. Annie Cupka, and Mr. Jeffrey Bush. The following members are participating through electronic and remote means after notifying the chair that temporary disabilities and/or other medical conditions exist that prevent the member's physical attendance, myself being one Kathy Binder, chairperson, and Mr. Jeffrey Stonehill. I direct the clerk to include this statement and the statement of remote participating board members to be memorialized in the minute. Thank you all for attending this go-to meeting. For my fellow board members, like we did the last time, I'll address each of you in turn when we get to discussion matters so we can do it in an orderly fashion. Next up, Dr. Young, are there any amendments to the agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Right now, we'll have public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. Do we have any correspondence or anybody who would like to speak online?
Nobody online, ma'am. Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, we'll return to the reports of the members of the board. Mr. Stonehill. I'll come back to Mr. Stonehill. Miss Annie Cupka?
Yes, ma'am. On Tuesday, March 31st, 2020, I attended the county budget work session. Thank you to county staff for your hard work as we continue our budget process, and to Dr. Benson for his presentation on behalf of King George County Schools. I'm hopeful all departments can work together to find cost savings across the board, as we know the current public health situation will have a significant impact on our revenues for next year and possibly beyond. Friday, April 3rd, I participated in a conference call for elected officials hosted by Congressman Rob Whitman. I thanked him for all he's doing to provide us with information regarding federal funding opportunities made available to our businesses to try to bridge the gap during these uncertain times. I pointed out to him that there seems to be a disconnect between the Small Business Administration's funding mechanisms and our local lenders' ability to implement the loans in a timely fashion. As of today, I've seen a number of local lenders now finally able to offer these application processes online. Yesterday, I attended the dedication of the Steve F. Dempsey K-9 kennel at King George Sheriff's Office. Thank you to Sheriff Giles for keeping this on track. And today, I participated just prior to this meeting in the Rappahannock Area YMCA All Branch Board Meeting. Please know that the YMCA is working to provide services and is working very hard to modify their mission to deal with the changing times. To our county staff, thank you for keeping the county running during what is going to be a prolonged situation. Can any of you all hear anything? We're having a lot of feedback. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for keeping the county running during what is going to be a prolonged situation. Please know your efforts don't go unnoticed. To our teachers and school staff, thank you for sharing resources via email or social media to keep your students engaged. I know it means so much to our families to hear from you. To our first responders, healthcare workers, grocery and pharmacy workers, thank you for putting yourselves in harm's way to make sure our basic needs continue to be met. To our community, please, keep doing what you're doing to care for yourselves and your families, and get fresh air and exercise following social distancing guidelines to stay healthy. Please, stay at home unless you need food, medicine, or necessary supplies, or are an essential worker per the governor's order. Do what you can to check in on your neighbors and friends, whether that's a phone call, Skype, Zoom, or a wave from your front yard. We are all in this together, and we will get through it by working together. We are a community that cares. Thank you again to all of you in our community for the opportunity to serve you. Please don't hesitate to contact me via email with your cares and concerns for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also attended the budget work session on the school's budget. Thank you to Dr. Benson for a very thorough presentation and understanding my points of view. It was a very open and honest conversation that we had, and I look forward to moving through that process. I don't have really any other reports, per se, but I do have something that I'd like to share for the record. On March 25th, I posted something on my social media for my constituents, and I feel it pertinent to read, and I find it more applicable to today than I did when it was initially written on March 25th. While we tend to gravitate to national politics, it's local politics and policies that affect you and your family every single day. While I'm grateful for the job our president and his team are doing to address our national concerns, our Congress can't seem to get out of their own ideological way and put aside personal agendas to do their job. Here at home, I couldn't be prouder of the local efforts being made in King George County. From measures taken by county administration, departments, staff, and constitutional officers to keep the business and services of the county flowing, to the sheriff's office program to assist the vulnerable by picking up and delivering medications and essential items, to the schools, civic organizations, and nonprofits who are working to ensure those children who depend on school lunches are being fed, to all our public safety officers, sheriff's office, to the fire, rescue, and emergency services, our community nurses, doctors, and urgent care and hospital workers who leave their families at home to go out and provide for our safety, security, and health care, our truck drivers, grocery store clerks keep commerce moving and restock our shelves with supplies every single day, business owners are keeping their doors open by adapting to orders and providing services, the teachers who are now home still working to reach and help their students by any means that they can, and parents who now find themselves as educators this far into the educational year while still having to telework. This isn't a complete list, I'm sure. The circumstances and situation changes day to day, but we, as a community, will rise to the challenge. You can all be very proud of the role each of you play and the job we are all doing to make King George a resilient county. God bless. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Granger?
Yes, ma'am. I've had the opportunity over the last couple of weeks to call into a handful of different teleconferences about the COVID-19 situation. It seems to be another dissemination point for information that is pretty freely available currently, though, so nothing really significant came out of those, I felt. Other than that, I did attend on March 31st a budget work session with the school board, or actually with Dr. Benson Superintendent. I appreciate Dr. Benson tele-attending. It's always a difficult meeting to have. The school board is, or the schools are the biggest pot of money in the county, and so we look at that one pretty hard, and I imagine it was even more difficult having to tele-attend. But thank you to Dr. Benson for making that effort and answering her questions. Very professionally done. Also, this past Monday, I had the opportunity to attend the K-9 dedication to Steve Dempsey. I'd like to say thank you to Sheriff Giles for the invitation. I imagine we would have had a lot more people coming out, but we were working to make sure that we were not going above the limit, so there were a handful of us out there, but really appreciate everything that retired Sheriff Dempsey has done for us over the decades as a sheriff, as well as a member of the sheriff's department. Other than that, the other thing I'd have to bring up is the 2020 census. Please don't forget about that. We are at about 50%. You can go online, you can go by, call by phone, and if you receive it in the mail, you can return that form. Please take the time to fill that out or to provide that information. It is important to the county. I'd like to echo what all of my colleagues have said. I would like to say thank you to staff for continuing to keep the county running. I know it's a difficult situation, but I know that we've still received services as well, and so I appreciate it. I'd like to say thank you to the schools. My children have also been receiving packets and things to work on, even to the point where they're going to have the opportunity to take their AP test, and so I really appreciate those opportunities in these challenging times to still make that happen. I'd like to say thank you to all of our first responders. Thank you for the dedication and service that you provide, and just thank you to all those who are critical employees out in the workforce and to continue to support our community. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. I see you're online now, Mr. Stonehill. Would you like to give your board report? Can you hear us, Mr. Stonehill? Do we see him online?
Mr. Stonehill, can you hear us? Mr. Stone, yes? Ms. Chairman Binder asked if you'd like to give your board report now?
Ms. Binder, it appears that Mr. Stonehill is having some technical difficulties, I think.
Ma'am, we can move forward. Chris Dines is going to reach out to Mr. Stonehill and advise him and walk him through instructions to engage us via phone.
Okay. Well, I will give my board report right now, then. I want to personally thank our first responders and county employees, law enforcement, food service and retail workers, educators, and those giving medical care in our community. Thank you for all you do. You are the people that are out in the public doing the best you can for our community, and I really want to thank you for all that you do. I also want to personally thank all of our county staff that have been working diligently to get us through all of this and respond to requests from the public, requests from businesses, requests from us as the board supervisor members, all that. I just want to thank you for all you do. Dr. Young, our sheriff's office, our fire and EMS, and Chris and IT, thank you for helping me with the go-to meeting. I want everybody to know I'm here in my house. I have a family member who's in a high-risk category, so trying to limit my exposure out in the open to protect them, but I want to thank all he did mean to get this work. It took about an hour, but I really want to thank him for making this happen so we could do this in a timely manner. And I also want to point out how important it is that all these people in our communities that are giving back to their community in little tiny ways. I have a neighbor, her name is Rita Swenson, and she is hand-making masks for everyone on our road, and it is eight houses with family members in it. And that's just an example. There are so many examples out there, but that is just an example of how these small little things you can do for your community, the teachers that are emailing or calling their students that are not in class anymore. My daughter's bus driver called her just to check off on her. Those are just the wonderful things our communities do, and I just want it out there in the public that King George is an amazing place. And as I've all said, everybody knows how much I don't like social media, but because of this, to try to get a little bit of presence out there in the community, and it's something I can handle, I did set up a Twitter account, and my Twitter is @KathyShiloh. That's @KathyShiloh. So if you would like to follow my Twitter handle, as they say, please go to @KathyShiloh. I'm not the best at it, but I'm trying. It's the one that I can manage. And I want to thank everybody once again, and I also want to point out, Ms. Cupka, if my line drops out, please take over the meeting. Just want to acknowledge that. So thankful, Mr. Stonehill, can he get online yet to give a report? If not, I'll move on.
I don't think he's connected via phone just yet, Madam Chair.
Okay. We'll go on to the consent agenda, then.
Move to accept test presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Sheriff vote, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, any reports from constitutional officers?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. Reported, the county attorney.
He's in attendance, Madam Chair. We're trying to coordinate his microphone.
Can y'all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I guess the phone isn't working. I had the computer on as well. Thank you, Madam Chair. If you can, is this good volume?
Yes.
You're good to go, Matt.
All right. The only thing I have, the only thing I have is the emergency ordinance addressing the continuity of operations for the county. As you know, the governor has issued at least three emergency orders regarding COVID-19 pandemic, 51, 53, and 55, and I reviewed those with county administrator, also the emergency manager, as well as the sheriff, common attorney, and Chief Moody and others. And in addition to that, the executive orders have enacted the Commonwealth of Virginia Emergency Operations Plan, and the President of the United States has also declared a national emergency in conjunction with the World Health Organization declaring COVID-19 a pandemic. The Board of Supervisors, then, on March 17th enacted and confirmed the declaration of local emergency done by Dr. Young, and as a result of that, the Board of Supervisors is addressing tonight an emergency ordinance for continuity of government, which allows, among other things, to hold electronic board meetings. The Freedom of Information Act generally does not allow the holding of participation by board members by electronic means, absent such an emergency ordinance. Tonight, you have two members present by electronic means but a physical quorum present, which is allowed under the code as long as those two members have called in and declared their reason, which, by the way, the governor has said this pandemic is a sufficient reason under a disaster for two members to call in. So you're now operating under what are called the electronic meeting rules, which you have adopted previously. This ordinance would allow you to meet without anyone being physically present. In addition, the ordinance would delay all public hearings until a time when the chair and others wish to set them and hear them after the pandemic is over or other people can communicate their comments. It also delays or postpones all of the current deadlines of the county for anything pending, even if it is required by law. Comments are being taken, as required by code, through electronic means, and I believe that the county has provided copious ways to do that. I used two today. Good thing I did. I called in, that didn't work, you couldn't hear me, but the computer worked for me. Any votes taken during such a meeting must be by roll call. That means that the person voting has to state, we have to record it as their name, such as Chair Kathy Binder, and how that person voted. All of those votes need to be recorded in the meeting minutes, as well as the fact that the meeting was held by exclusively electronic means. If a meeting is held by exclusively electronic means after tonight, they will be closed to physical presence by the public. In addition, and finally, the Director of Emergency Management is granted emergency powers, which he typically does not hold. One is to regulate public congregation in accord with the emergency declaration, that is to say 10 or less people with social distancing and appropriate screening where necessary. In addition, the county administrator, who's also the Director of Emergency Management, can fund certain contracts while waiving cumbersome and burdensome requirements that would normally be in place under the Public Procurement Act and other acts and laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia, such as getting free bids, sealed bidding, and the like, as long as those contracts are for emergency needs, continuity of government, and such as renting equipment, purchasing supplies. In fact, we've already done that in order to purchase some masks under a different provision, but we were able to do that under a contract with a third party. Those things are going to come more and more, and so specifically in the code, those cumbersome requirements are waived. So in short, the emergency meeting allows for all electronic participation, delays all deadlines set by law or otherwise by the county's rules and procedures, and gives a couple of additional powers to the county administrator. By the way, Madam Chair, the ordinance is not mandatory. It just allows you to use it should you so desire with respect to the electronic meeting. That's it.
Do we have a motion to accept it?
Move to adopt the emergency ordinance as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have some questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Bush?
First thing, I know this isn't mandatory to use, and I do not have a problem with having this ordinance in place, but with some checks. The first being that if this was to be utilized as a tool, that it would definitely take a consensus of the board to move to actually utilize this, right? So it's not something that the emergency manager or the chair could say, this is what we're doing. It still takes a consensus of the board to say this is how the meeting's going to progress. Is that correct?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but that is correct. It does require a consensus vote by the Board of Supervisors, sort of governing about it.
Was that a question to me? It was a little broken up.
Yes, I just wanted to confirm that to execute the ordinance, it does require a vote of the Board of Supervisors. It can't be enacted as a unilateral execution or direction of the emergency manager, correct?
Well, the chair can call a, can invoke the ordinance, but the, any member can appear physically if they so desire. And if three or more members are present, there would be a physical quorum, and you would be participating under the ordinance. If you decided not to invoke the ordinance, then you'd be participating under the electronic meeting rules that you are tonight.
Yeah. And then my second, well, my concern is, I would like to see a terminal date on this. So if we adopt this emergency ordinance, then I would like a terminal date, just like the governor has declared, you know, a state of emergency to appoint with an end date and then a reassessment of the situation. I would like for us to do the same, have an end date to where this ordinance can be utilized, and then if we find ourselves under a different circumstance, at that point, we could reassess and then re-adopt or extend or whatever. But I do believe if we adopt an ordinance of this, and with all the other implications involved, simply besides us not having to be physically present, but the termination of public hearings, the termination of deadlines, et cetera, I would like to know that there is an endpoint, and then we can reassess. So that would be a request that we have an endpoint put into this.
Yes, yes, sir.
If I may, Madam Chair, that's actually in the ordinance. It needs to be reordained every 60 days.
Thank you. I'm satisfied.
It's the last, it is the very last thing that's ordained. It is further ordained right above the vote. It's every 60 days, and the law on that is that it can never last six months.
Okay. And that becomes effective today, correct?
Say, say again, excuse me?
No, the ordinance would be adopted, but it wouldn't be executed. Again, it'd be a requirement that it declared, A, we're going to move it to contingency and execute the all virtual meeting order, but right now, of course, we're not in that current state, so you all's vote tonight would just be adopting it to include it in the ordinance as a contingency.
Okay.
The ordinance will die a natural death if you don't reordain it in 60 days.
All right. Do we have any other discussion? All right, I'll take a vote now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? Sheriff vote, aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brenton, for all your work on this.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything else to report?
Oh, if I just may say, it's nice to be back. Good to see you all or hear you all, except for Mr. Stonehill.
Hey, we appreciate all the work you've done for us so far. It's been a lot. You came in at 60 times.
It's good to be here. I didn't mean it was to see Mr. Stonehill, just, I just meant I couldn't hear him.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll move on to presentations and reports. The middle school change order request by Adam Vogel, RRMM Architects.
Yes, ma'am. On March 3rd, 2020, branch construction advised RRMM Architects of asbestos discovered in Area A of the King George Middle School. To address this issue, RRMM advised the county to approve a change order for $85,116. RRMM also advised the county of the fact that the construction company could not continue work without approving the work order and addressing the asbestos. On March 4th, 2020, the county agreed to approve the change order with the request that RRMM Architects attend a subsequent board meeting and provide the supervisors more details regarding the change order and to address any additional questions or concerns. Though the board has already agreed to move forward with the change order, I'd recommend that the board approve change order number 069 in an amount of $85,116 by public vote. And again, RRMM is here today, and they're here and prepared to answer and entertain any discussions or concerns from the Board of Supervisors.
Do we have anybody who has any questions? The only thing I want to say is just to make sure for any buildings that we renovate in the future, that we really investigate the problems that might be there when we put it out to bid so that we don't have the constant change orders. That's my only comment.
So if I may, Madam Chair, I have a comment, not any, not a question for RRMM, but this is why we have contingencies built in into the financing of these major projects. This is something that actually fits within what a contingency is. I'm not going to rehash previous issues that we've had with utilization of contingency fund. My only question is, and if this is off the, or if you're not prepared for this, I apologize, Dr. Young, but how much is left in the contingency fund after this latest approval?
Currently, in the contingency fund, there's approximately $75,000 left. However, there's slightly over $100,000 that was put to the side for what you would call moisture mitigation, and luckily, we have not had to execute that funding, so we still do have that funds as a cushion in the event that... in the event that the project moves along and protracts, and another change order is discovered and needed to be addressed. So I'd say $75,000 on paper for contingency and approximately $100,000 that's basically earmarked in the budget that can be exercised and repurposed to address contingency needs and requirements.
Thank you. Dr. Young, you said we'd already approved this, but you would like us to approve it again?
Yes, sir. Just for the record, just approve it via public vote.
Fair enough. I move to approve change order number 069 in the amount of $85,116.
Do I have a second?
Yes, ma'am. I seconded.
All right. Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Chair of both sides, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Young. We'll move on to the FEMA preliminary floodplain presentation by Mr. Brad Hudson, Director of Community Development. Mr. Hudson?
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm waiting for the PowerPoint presentation to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for joining us online.
And Madam Chair, just for clarity, it's actually going to be Kyle Convoy giving the presentation. He's our GIS director and works under Brad Hudson in the Community Development Department.
All right. Thank you, Doc.
All right, so good evening. So why is FEMA updating the flood insurance rate maps in a flood insurance study? There's two main reasons for that. The first is they updated the Zone A, which are flood zones subject to inundation and require mandatory flood insurance. And the second reason is that they incorporated ladder elevation data point into the study. Ladder elevation data is more accurate and recent than the previous contour elevation data that they used in prior studies. The floodplains were last updated by FEMA in 2015. And prior to that, they were updated in 2009. So you can see it's kind of about a five to six-year update schedule. Next slide, please. Thank you. This slide shows the timeline for the FEMA project. You can see discovery was back in 2017, which would have been about two years after the 2015 floodplain maps became effective. In 2019, FEMA hosted a webinar for flood risk review. And in that meeting, they went over the technical aspects of the FEMA floodplains. Preliminary maps were issued in December 2019. Digital maps were issued first, and then the paper maps came shortly thereafter. This past February, King George County hosted FEMA in the boardroom for a community coordination and outreach meeting. In this meeting, FEMA went over the county's roles and responsibilities for the FEMA project. This coming fall, the appeal period will start. And this is a 90-day period in which an individual who believes their building not to be in a floodplain can hire an engineer or survey to provide data to FEMA for an appeal. And if FEMA accepts that appeal, they'll issue a letter of map correction, which will be incorporated into the flood insurance study. And then after the appeal period is over, FEMA will issue a letter of final determination. And in that letter, there'll be an effective date, which the maps will become effective, and that'll be about six months after the letter of final map termination. Next slide, please. So FEMA has a lot of good information on their webpage, including some tools and include apps and web viewers. So the one I want to talk about tonight is the changes since last firm viewer. And you can see the web address there is https://g.is/ And this web map viewer shows the changes since the last floodplains, and they're color-coded. So increase in the floodplains will be purple. Yellow will be decreases in the floodplain. And then unchanged floodplain will be blue. So we had 1,090 acres that were in the increase in floodplains for the county. And then we had 359 acres that were yellow and a decrease in floodplain for the county. Next slide, please. This is a screenshot of the changes since last firm viewer. And this area that we selected for the county shows a lot of changes since the last floodplains. So the areas that are in purple are increases in floodplain. And the areas that are in yellow will be decreases in floodplain, which means they'll no longer be in the floodplain. And then I heard of see blue-green areas, those are still in the floodplain and are unchanged. Of the upper left-hand corner, you can see the search bar, where you can search by your address or place. And then there's also some other web tools, including a measure tool and bookmark tool. Next slide, please. This is a FEMA slide showing the locality's role to the FEMA project. Review preliminary maps, flood insurance study, and summary of map actions. This has already been done. Next, comment on preliminary information. The GIS office regularly provides GIS planometric data to federal and state agencies. Planometric data is address points, roads, centerlines, driveways, building footprints, parcel data. And then the next role is appeal preliminary map if desired. Again, this is upcoming in this fall, and it'll be a 90-day period. It would require an engineer or survey to provide data to FEMA. And then reach out to community members is another role. And I'll talk more about that on the next slide. And the last role is waiting for the letter of final determination to adopt into the zoning ordinance. So floodplain action items. King George County already sent out 19 letters to property owners that had a structure in the FEMA floodplain change areas that included increased, decreased, and areas that had both. We also added a FEMA news flash to the county website with links to web map and additional floodplain information. The next step will be when FEMA places an ad in Freelance Star, and that'll start the 90-day appeal process. And then the last action item for the county will be updating the zoning ordinance with the effective date, which we'll get from the final letter of determination. And that should be in the summer of 2021 and fall 2021. That's all I have. Any questions or comments?
Do we have any questions? No questions. I know Ms. Tuckin and I attended that meeting with FEMA, and it was very informative. All right. We have no questions. Thank you, Kyle, Mr. Hudson, and the whole staff for that report. All right. We'll move on to the action items. First one, Department of Finance, award of a construction contract for the stabilization of a structure at 370 Emery Lane, King George, Virginia. Dr. Young.
Ma'am, that'll be, I'm sorry. I'm going to turn these three action items over to Levita Cobb, who's in our procurement office.
All right. Thank you. Doc?
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. All right, so Levita Cobb with Department of Finance. I'm sorry, I forgot to turn on my camera. I actually have three projects to bring to you all this evening. So the first one is 370 Emery Lane. Just a little background information. At your meeting on June 19, 2018, the Board of Supervisors approved the amendments to the Public Nuisance and Unsafe Building Abatement Ordinance. And that was just to address unsafe buildings within the county. So on March 29, 2018, Community Development received a complaint of a partially fire-damaged structure at 370 Emery Lane. And that unit was actually placated by Fire and Rescue back in 2017. The home is abandoned, and it remains open and unsecured since the fire. And it's open to the elements, and it's continuing to deteriorate. At your meeting on February 4, 2020, Mr. Brad Hudson with Community Development, he came and presented, and the Board of Supervisors approved funding for this site not to exceed $6,500. So we put out an IFB, and on March 18, 2020, bids were received, and we opened them publicly for the stabilization of a structure at this location. And we received two bids. The scope of work under this project includes all services, labor, and materials necessary for the stabilization of a structure. Additionally, all equipment, tools, transportation, permits, disposal, cleanup, and all work required to make watertight the existing fire-damaged structure. Also, the contractor will be responsible for the removal and legal disposal of all materials and disconnecting existing electric line and service. The low base bid in the amount of $3,500 was submitted by Few Oaks Farm. We completed a review of Few Oaks Farm, and we find that the bid and the qualifications that this contractor is qualified, responsible, and responsive. So this evening, I recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to Few Oaks Farms for the stabilization of a structure located at 370 Emery Lane in the amount of $3,500, and authorize the county administrator to execute a construction services agreement with Few Oaks Farms, subject to approval of the construction agreement as to form by the county attorney.
So moved.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? Chair of both sides, motion carries. Ms. Cobb, 0405.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I won't give the background information because it's really just the same. But I'll just tell you, at the meeting on February 4, the board approved funding for 17316 Ospey Road not to exceed $15,000. That complaint was a partially collapsed two-story wooden structure. And the property also has a collapsing small metal structure. The site also has household debris and other desirable trash around it. So we put this one out for bid, and on March 12, we publicly opened for the demolition of structures located at 17316 Ospey Road. We received five bids. And the scope of work under this project includes all services, labor, and materials necessary for the demolition of structures located at 17316 Ospey Road. The contractor shall provide all labor, materials, equipment, tools, transportation, permits, disposal, securing of utilities, cleanup, and all work required to demolish the existing structures and dispose of the materials. The contractor shall also obtain all building permits required by Community Development and Department of Health. The low base bid that we received was in the amount of $7,150, and that was submitted by Atrium Construction. We completed a review, and we find them to be qualified, responsive, and responsive. So I recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to Atrium Construction for the demolition of structures located at 17316 Ospey Road in the amount of $7,150, and authorize the county administrator to execute a construction contract as to form by the county attorney.
So moved.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? Chair of both sides. Thank you, Ms. Cobb, 0406.
Okay, last one. 17289 Ospey Road. At the meeting on February 4, the board approved funding for this site not to exceed $10,000. So on March 11, we received a total of five bids. The scope of work under this project includes all services, labor, and materials necessary for the removal and legal disposal of the mobile home. Additionally, all equipment, tools, transportation, permits, capping and/or sealing of the well, sewer line and electric service, cleanup, removal, and legal disposal of all materials and debris on the property, and also seeding and mulching of all the areas. The low base bid in the amount of $4,500 was submitted by Few Oaks Farm. And as I stated with the other one, we did a review, and this contract is qualified, responsible, and responsive. So I recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to Few Oaks Farm for the removal of a mobile home located at 17289 Ospey Road in the amount of $4,500, and also authorize the county administrator to execute a construction services agreement with Few Oaks Farms, subject to approval of the construction agreement as to form by the county attorney.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? Chair of both sides, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cobb.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next up.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was just going to say, I just got audio up through via telephone, so.
Well, Mr. Stonehill, at the end, I'll let you give your board report. Do you have a board report?
Yeah, when you all get finished.
We'll put you right up there. Glad to hear you now. All right, we'll move on to Dr. Young, the Department of Economic Development Tourism, funding for the launch of the visitkinggeorge.com website and the creation of an additional page to support our local small businesses. Dr. Young and our EDA Director, Mr. Minor.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Now I can hear you.
Okay, great. So good evening, Madam Chairman, and members of the board. Today, I'll be presenting the Carryout King George Marketing Plan as well as an initiative to launch the tourism website. Next slide, please. With unprecedented changes in the short-term retail and restaurant landscape as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, economic developers and tourism marketers are seeking ways to help their local businesses stay afloat. Part of this effort includes providing a central clearinghouse location for information about businesses that are still open and offering curbside delivery, takeout, or shipping. Next slide, please. So the proposal of work. Take a previously mocked-up tourism website that has not gone live and install a new template that reflects King George's character, export and re-import the data on the points of interest contained in that site, keeping the same website name and building a page of the site specifically aimed at promoting restaurants and retailers that are offering curbside takeout or delivery, including links to those businesses' online ordering pages, update all plugins on the existing site, launch site under the domain's name owned by King George County in conjunction with the website, launch the Carryout King George marketing campaign. Next slide, please. Were rebuilding the site and a new theme and building out the additional functionality will be approximately $3,000. Normally, this type of job will be a higher price, but it's important to study that cost given the high impact of the COVID-19 impact. Next slide, please. While this is needed, the COVID-19 pandemic is severely affecting our restaurants and retail shops. The restaurants and retail shops depend heavily on base traffic for business. Due to the executive order handed down by the governor to ensure public safety and health, traffic in the county is down significantly. The county has an existing dormant tourism website that needs to be updated. The launch of this site can assist the tourism industry moving forward and help existing businesses right now. Next slide, please. So this slide shows what our website currently looks like. The bottom-left slide is actually what the front page looks like. The other ones are just pages that need to be updated. And a change of theme or a change of color theme could assist with that. Next slide, please. So this is an existing page that's currently up now that the city of Fredericksburg has. They have a Love Local campaign going right now. They're right now, I believe, they just finished up their takeout week. Uh, as you can see, they have one slide, one page for food and drink, the other for retail, and they have various options at the bottom. I think they're even doing some sort of gift card handout. Uh, next slide please. Stafford has something a little bit more simplistic. They have the To Go Stafford. Restaurants can actually come in and add their names. Can we add their restaurants and their contact information and what it is they're currently offering? And then the larger slide, till you're right there, just has them all listed out with links to them if they are doing online order. Next slide please. Thank you. Thank you, guys. If I'm going to take any questions.
I'm going to go into order. Uh, Ms. Cupka, do you have any questions?
Um, yes, I do have a few questions. Um, I realize that, uh, we have an emergency disaster declaration and don't have to follow, uh, normal procurement procedures. Um, but first, have you, Mr. Minor, did you consult any members of the Tourism Advisory Committee, uh, with regard to their thoughts about, uh, moving forward in this fashion? I know it originally was their website, so I'd be curious to hear what they thought about the situation.
Uh, y- yes, ma'am, I did. So that was the first, um, that was the first place I went. I talked to them first and asked them what they thought about the idea. They loved the idea. Um, they were concerned about some liability because they, at first, they were, they were asking me whether we were going to take orders through the website and I told them that's something that we would not consider, that's something we can't do, but what we can do is have a direct link to them. Um, and that's really, I mean, that was really the only concern we had. Uh, you know, I did engage with children to see if they would be wanting my help earlier in February. Uh, they never responded. Uh, and this was just sort of do the same thing to kind of update the theme. And now that we're in this COVID-nineteen outbreak, I just figured we could sort of kill two birds with one stone by launching the website as well as kicking it off with a campaign to help businesses through this time.
Thank you. Um, so next question, what's your timeline for this? How, how quickly do you think you can roll this out if we were to approve this tonight?
So the page can be done in less than a week. Um, that's just the individual page. The implementing the theme and the relaunch of the website may take, I would say, a week and a half or two weeks. Um, but this is, these are all estimations. Uh, one of the reasons why we, we haven't done it ourselves is because the website is customized and it requires, uh, some additional coding and just some things that I just don't have. Uh, it's just much higher level web development that I just can't do. Um, I can use WordPress as what it's currently on, but I can't, um, edit the website the way that a professional web developer can.
And that was going to be my next question is, uh, because I was present a couple of years ago at that original vendor when they trained myself and another staff member on how to update the website. So I wasn't sure if it was a matter of coding, um, that we just don't have the technical experience for or not. So thanks for answering that. So I guess my only hesitation is that website was under development for two years for twenty twenty and here it's April of twenty twenty and now we're just kind of getting the ball, ball rolling because there was an emergency and we need this website to get information out about our restaurants that are still open and our businesses that are still open to serve our community. So now we have an emergency, I guess, is the point I'm trying to make and I'm wondering, and I know you aren't responsible for this. All of this happened before you came here, Mr. Minor, but by my accounting, it looked to me like we spent six thousand seven hundred sixty dollars on this website that still is not live. And so this for me gives me great pause. I, I just want to know if we do this, this is going to be live and this, this rolls and we don't keep having to revisit this conversation over and over again. Uh, I think.
Uh, yes, ma'am. I mean, the plan is to launch the site. Um, the hesitation, I would say, is not from my department or I would even say not from the TAC. I think it's just coming to an agreement, collectively coming to an agreement between the TAC, the Board, and my department. Um, you know, I've, I've been getting feedback from the Board of Supervisors, feedback from the TAC on what it is they would like to see. Tried to bring that together in February and then early March, this just came upon us. So now this is this sort of, um, you know, an action plan that was like, hey, let's get this thing up. Let's try to support, uh, the businesses right now. And I know this is an additional cost. This will be a very expensive website when it's all said and done. Um, but I just, you know, I'm just trying to get the job done and that's what I came.
I appreciate that. And if I could, if we do end up approving this tonight, if I could make one additional request of you or your staff, um, given that the intent of this was to help promote twenty twenty tricentennial celebration events, which obviously we're not having, but if you all could as part of what you share, your content on the website, keep that in mind and try to, um, I guess somehow relay information about what we had planned to do. Um, like, for example, last weekend, we were going to have an, an event at Ralph Bunch. So if you can kind of steer your content, um, going forward, to be mindful of that so that we do want folks to still know it is twenty twenty, it is still our tricentennial, even though we can't get together and celebrate it like we planned. That's all I would ask. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Mr. Bush.
Thank you. Um, I, just to follow up immediately on, on what Andy was saying. I, I agree absolutely about the three-hundredth anniversary, uh, stuff being put on there. But, um, July fourth still may happen. We don't know. So I'm, I'm optimistic, um, that, that's something that could be put on there. But aside from that, first off, Mr. Minor, thank you very much for all your hard work um, and, and recognizing our local businesses, um, need some help. With that, has, has the Chamber of Commerce been, been working on things? And the reason I bring that up is I have been reading some things about restaurants that are adapting to the executive order and they're still providing takeout services. And there seems to be a large, um, support and, and following on social media. Um, being this is King George County, you know, the truth of the matter is not everybody's on the internet. I don't, I don't know how successful a webpage would be. Um, I think, I love the initiative. I love the plan. And I'm not saying I'm totally against the website, but there are things with this particular website that are concerning. When this was presented to us, it was, I'll be gentle and say it was not a good product. Okay? That's the, just the truth. I, I, I didn't think it was a good product at the time, the first time I saw it. Now, there may have been follow-up by the department that I, I, I'm not aware of, but there very may well have been and it might be a better website. If this does move forward, I like the timeline that Ms. Cupka was asking about. I think that's a reasonable timeline. But I want to make sure we're not rushing to failure, that whatever product is put out there, if this is Visit King George and you're highlighting things about the county to advocate tourist, tourism, let's make sure this webpage works, there's no dead ends, and that, that it meets our objectives. I just, I don't want to have a, a half-cocked product out there. But, um, I'm a little leery about having multiple webpages for King George County after we just rebuilt our entire website. Um, but I'm not a professional in economic development. That's why we got people like Mr. Minor. So if, if this is what he believes, as long as those checks can be put in place, then I got no problem.
Understood.
Mr. Ranger.
I, I have no questions, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Minor.
Mr. Stonehill. Mr. Stonehill, can you hear me?
Mr. Stonehill, are you still on the line?
Am I allowed? Well, let me ask my questions. Maybe he'll be online by the time questions are asked. Um, a couple of things. Um, I know I met with you, Mr. Minor, in, in February and, and you had said this would be live by now. And I know there's, there's issues with the original vendor. And one of my concerns is going to another provider is that original vendor, do, what, do they still own our domain? I mean, I know we have our domain names, but I, I would like it to be all in one location instead of two different entities. Um, sort of not owning, I can't think of the right word, our website. And with that being said, I, I'm a little leery of entering into an agreement with a, another vendor without fully being able to, uh, vet it and does that lock us in to using that vendor for the continuation now?
No, ma'am. This is, um, this is strictly for design. There is an option to have him, to have that vendor hosted, but they're not interested in it. This is, this is only for the design of the website, for the theme change and for the, to create the creation of that additional page.
So it's that, it's just for that page and the theme, so that does not lock us into a permanent agreement with that vendor? Is that correct?
No, ma'am. It's only if we choose to take on, to, to have him hosted or to have them hosted.
Well, I, I would like that specifically in whatever agreement we, we have.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
And, uh, another thing is too, along with our tourism and the three-hundredth and the local businesses, I want to make sure that we include all businesses that are being affected now that, so, you know, people know they're open, the example like Brackets Hardware, you know, to, to, to post people, not just restaurants, or all of our local businesses.
Understood. Yeah, all the businesses should be listed as long as they're involved in tourism or retail or, um, have any aspect of that. Uh, so as long as they're, they fall in that industry group, they'll be, they'll be listed on there.
Okay, because I, I just want to make sure we promote all of our businesses in, uh, King George County. Um, Mr. Stonehill, are you online yet?
Uh, I think so. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, I had just a couple of questions. I mean, I'm, I've been possible this, um, website last two years and it hasn't gone live yet. Um, my concerns are, um, you know, websites, I run the small website and it's not all that difficult, um, number one. I mean, we don't have people, staff that can take care of this up, uh, website or sure that we have, you know, an outside agency take care of it. And that, my other question is, is there, nobody here that can do George website for us? I mean, like I said, it's, it's not very difficult to do.
Uh, y- yes, sir. I understand that. Um, I had an approach for Don to ask him if he could do that specific type of web development. Um, I was under the understanding that, well, from what I've heard from the, uh, the current developer, was that this is a customized website. There is no, um, to be, to be frank with you, you would have to do additional coding in order to change, I would say, the color scheme or to change the format of this website, um, that they have specifically done. Um, I'm not sure if, uh, Chris Downs has that, um, ability or not. Uh, I didn't engage with him, but I know that the consultant that I am working with does have that ability. Um, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to work with them, because they have expertise in tourism websites and economic development websites, so.
Um, nobody here in, in George can, that can do a website like that? We don't have any design here in the county?
None that I'm aware of, sir. Um, I could definitely take a look, uh, you know, before that, that check is set, but, you know, this is, this is kind of time-sensitive. Um, given the impact of the, um, you know, the, the surveys that, that, uh, the survey that I sent out and the, and the responses I've been getting from those surveys, um, it, it seems that they're, they're in pretty dire need right now to get some, some kind of support. Um, to, you know, to, to, to look for an additional consultant right now, which is maybe a little bit, a little, little bit much too, uh, complicated.
Well, I know, um, you know, your, your predecessor was working on this for a while and like we said, you mean, it's been, it's been two years in the making to do so. Um, and like Mrs. Cupka said, you know, it's just kind of coming to forefront right now due emergency that we have going on. Um, so, and, and like I said, it's not, it, it's not rocket science to, you know, to do the website, so, you know, maybe there's somebody local that can do something like that and so we don't have to burden, uh, Mr. Dines with yet another, uh, website for us. I mean, those are, those are just some of my concerns and questions.
Mr. Don, when you say local, do you mean inside of King George or just within the area?
Well, it would be great to have, you know, a, a King George, you know, based business or a resident that, you know, that does it, um, for our website. I mean, that would, you know, that would be great to, you know, be able to do.
Understood, sir.
But that's all I have on that.
Mr. Stonehill, jumping, jumping off that point. My other thing too is, uh, are, we're not getting a lot of tourism dollars right now and, and every dollar is precious in that tourism fund. So using another three thousand dollars off of that just concerns me a little bit. And I've always said, and I know I, I say this a lot to my colleagues, that I think coming with this crisis, we realize that we really need somebody in our county, in our, in our own staff that is responsible for our branding, our marketing, our social media, our website and, and then they, they're part of the King George staff and so they really appreciate King George and work for King George. Not saying an outside vendor wouldn't, but I'm always for someone that's pushing our brand as part of King George and not an, an outside vendor. And I, I just don't want to make a quick decision like this, just, uh, not, just doing this right away and then get locked into contract with an outside vendor just for a short-term thing when maybe we take a little time to see if we can find somebody local. There's lots of people in our community that might even volunteer their services. We have a lot of smart people in our community. Um, what do you guys think on the, any other discussion?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
I'm just going to jake really quick. Um, so the, and I understand I'm a vendor, but economic development and I would say the tourism, website development, our marketing side of it, you know, there's, it's, it's a very small group. There's only a handful of people who actually do this, understand what our competitors are doing. Um, and, you know, not that we're necessarily competing on anything like this, but when this is over, we will be. Um, and that's one of the reasons why the person I chose is the person, you know, or the people, the person that I think is going to do this website or I hope does this website, um, I'm trying to get them to do it, uh, because they work with other, other organizations, other localities. Um, you know, they, they've worked with other regional groups as well. Um, so I just, I trust their expertise. Um, you know, I have worked with them in the past, probably about five years ago. So I know what they're capable of doing. I know how quick they are. Uh, so, I mean, that's, that's really what I'm going off of and going off their expertise and they work for, um, and just their economic development, marketing, um, you know, um, previous work.
Madam Chair.
I, I understand. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Bush. I just wanted to finish off that comment and I would get you, um, I respect that. I just, I, I would like the little more, be able to do research. This originally wasn't even slated to be on, on the agenda and, and I would just like to do a little more research. You're just making a, a snap decision. But, Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, a couple of things. First off, um, I like the fact that Mr. Minor does have experience with them. Um, so that kind of gives me a little confidence that, and, and this is his department, so, uh, I, I'm glad that he has confidence and is very familiar with them. With that being said, I'm sensitive to the fact that as, as he pointed out, this is time-sensitive. We have businesses that have revenue shortfalls, just like the county's experiencing it, these, these businesses are. Now, I know Congress passed a bill, the President signed it, the small business loans, um, they're not rolling out. Banks are having issues getting these things taken care of and our small businesses actually need a lifeline. They need a life ring thrown. So given the timeline and if Mr. Minor believes this can work, that, that I have one question for Dr. Young. What is our balance in the tourism fund as of right now?
Sir, um, monies that were appropriated, given all the events that we requested for the three-hundredth anniversary, uh, that brought the balance down to five hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. However, since those, uh, monies aren't going to be spent like on the Ralph Bunch in the previous, um, I can give you a rough estimate that it's going to be closer, I mean, the balance now is closer to five sixty to five, five hundred sixty, five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars.
And if Mr. Minor is requesting three thousand dollars and, and this is going to throw our small businesses a life ring, I can't, I, I support it.
Madam Chair, may I ask?
Anybody?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Cupka.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could just ask Mr. Minor a, a follow-up question. So this engagement, this three thousand dollars is for layout redesign, but it's not for continual updating. but it's not for continual updating of content, correct?
That's correct. So the idea is the theme, once he changes the theme, it will be edited. I will be able to edit it myself, my, in my staff. And that's the issue with the current site. If we wanted to change, if we wanted to change the color scheme or if we wanted to relay out the page, we would have to contact the consultant every time under, once he changes the theme to the one that we're, but I hope that we work with, then I would be able to do that.
Thank you. And that was going to be my next question is you do have a staff member trained on WordPress, right? Who can make updates. So this is not a matter of us having to engage Mr. Dines or having to continuously engage this vendor to update the website. Because as long as you get the template set the way that you want it to, addressing the coding issues that you can't resolve in-house, then in-house, you can use, you all know how to update WordPress, right? And you all can take care of that ongoing yourselves, right?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Exactly. So my previous experience at the FRA, that's what I did. I managed the website. But the template was a lot, was different than the one that the tourism website currently has now. So I would create pages, I would help them, I would design that page and I would maintain that page. With this current layout, there's nothing, you know, I can't get in there and, you know, make these additions to it or change the color scheme or change a page to it. Once this additional page is made, this page can be used for further, you know, for further events or further campaigns that we want to run, whether it's for, you know, the census or whether it's for shop small or it's, you know, whatever we'd like to use for just to promote the county moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Miner. You have addressed all of my many concerns. Thank you very much.
So just to clarify, I want to make sure. So this $3,000 would be used for the vendor to fix the tweaks we had mentioned before in the website and to create that one page and that would be it, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And no continuation unless we decided to, correct?
Correct.
And then my last question with the original vendor, do we, are we, with this new vendor, how are they going to be able to change the theme and that and fix the website? Do they have to contact the other vendor to get that permission or?
No ma'am. So we control, we completely control the website. It's just a matter of fact of being able to edit the website.
Okay.
Sorry, so children, so the current vendor just hosts the site. So they manage it on the hosting, I would say, just hosting it on the web. And they charge us a fee for that. But as far as the design, we can have whoever we like design it. It would just be nice if we could design it internally so we don't have to spend money every time we want to.
Yeah, that would be nice. And it's just as long as we make sure that we're able to do that afterwards, but you've said that. Do we have any more discussion on this or I'll take a motion?
I move to authorize $3,000 in expenditures against the tourism fund to fund the launch of the King George, visit kinggeorge.com website and create an additional page that promotes and supports our retail and restaurant businesses in King George County.
Second.
Doug second?
Yes, Mr. Bush seconded.
All right. Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Miner.
Thank you guys. Have a good night.
All right. Next up, county administration, transfer of funds for county attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board of supervisors hired the county attorney outside of the adopted budgets. Therefore, funds must be allocated to the county attorney budget or salary and benefits through the end of the fiscal year. I recommend the board supervisors approve a transfer of $52,708 from the general fund fund balance to the general fund and appropriate these monies to the payment of salary and benefits for the county attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Welcome aboard, Mr. Britton. Next up, discussion items. Do we have any? Dr. Young?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. So we're up to your report, Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, let me thank the board for all the kind comments that you all have relayed to the county staff as we work diligently to provide appropriate emergency response to our general public. But more than your words, I really want to thank you all for your continued support and confidence in the county staff. Our guys have been working very hard and I'm really proud of all the actions and efforts that they put forth to sustain government operations. But we can't do it without you all's support and more importantly, without you all's confidence. So that's not a loss on us and we thank you all for that. Madam Chair, I want to cede time out of my county administrative report to the emergency management team. Given the fluid situation on the ground and our current state of affairs, I thought that it would be prudent, as both you and Mr. Britton agreed, to provide the emergency management staff time to provide an update to the board and the general public regarding the COVID-19 virus. But before I ask them to come forward and present their presentation, I do have a plug from Chris Clark from the Parks and Recreation Department and I read his comments. First, he wants everyone to stay safe and play all, but he wants to remind everybody that all playgrounds and restrooms continue to be closed until further notice in an effort to stop the spread of COVID-19. Our parks are open for passive recreation only. Park users must comply with social gathering and distancing requirements as established by the Center for Disease Control. In addition, King George County and the Commonwealth of Virginia are leaders in the 2020 census response. Virginia currently ranks fourth among all 50 states and King George County is 57th among counties with population under 32,000. We have had 53.8% of our households return their census. While this is a fantastic response rate, we'll need the remainder of our residents to respond. You can respond online at my2020census.gov, by phone at 844-330-2020 or by mailing back your census form. You do not need your census ID or to have received a mailer in order to respond. Starting in May, census workers will begin to visit homes that have not responded. Please practice social distancing between yourself and a census worker by responding today. If someone does not have internet access and would like to respond online, they can ask a relative or a close friend to help. Responding only takes a few minutes. If residents have questions or concerns, they can reach out to Chris Clark, the Director of Parks and Recreation and the Chair of the Census Complete Committee. His phone number is 540-775-4386. With that being said, Madam Chair, I'd like to invite both Chief Lynn, our Emergency Management Director, and Chief Moody, the Fire and Rescue Chief for King George County Fire and Rescue Department, to present the board and the general public an update on the COVID-19 crises.
All right, thank you. Florence.
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine. Go right ahead.
Good evening. For the purpose of the viewers, my name is David Moody. I'm the County Fire and Rescue Chief and Emergency Management Coordinator. I have with me Steve Lynn, Battalion Chief and Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator. First, want to just, we want to take the opportunity to update the board and some of the actions that Fire, Rescue, Public Safety, Law Enforcement and our county actions that we have undergone since the last time we've provided you an update. Real quick, just want to provide you some of the latest numbers. I know everybody is fully aware, you can't turn on your TV or a computer without seeing this information, but just for the purposes of the board and also the viewers, as of latest today, nationally, we're up to 374,000 cases of COVID-19. This was an increase overnight, last 24 hours of over 69,000 cases. We're over 12,000 deaths nationally. In Virginia, we're over 3,333 cases, increase of 455 in 24 hours. We're also tracking what's occurring in Maryland. In Maryland, 4,371 cases, increase of 326 over the past 24 hours. Fredericksburg region, which includes our Rappahannock Area Health District, reporting 93 confirmed cases and that's an increase in seven in the past 24 hours. And in King George County, we are at nine and we had no changes in 24 hours. I mentioned Maryland just as a point of interest and I've had a lot of candid conversations with Dr. Young and our other emergency management team. And we have more cases, confirmed cases in Charles County than we do in our entire Rappahannock region. We're seeing quite a bit of a hotspot in the national capital region, particularly in Maryland. Just as our recent numbers today, 136 confirmed cases, what the Health Department in Maryland's confirming just for Charles County. 46 St. Mary's. St. Mary's was just right at double digits last week. Now they're at 46 confirmed cases. I spoke to the Director of Emergency Management for Charles County earlier today and they were, they were believed that there was a delta difference of about 30 some cases that they're right around closer to the 160 mark. Really jumps up once you go to a county north of Charles County and Prince George's County, they're at 1,020 cases. And Montgomery County's at 871. So we are seeing, obviously, this is a great importance to King George County because we have a bridge that connects the two states. And even though we have some essential stay-at-home orders in both states, there's still a lot of latitude in which people can be on the roads and they still have to shop and they still have to work. So we see that transient progression still being a fairly significant risk for our county and our community. With that, I'm going to, where's our clicker?
Chris has the clicker.
Oh, click it, Chris. Next slide. Okay, just real quick, some of the summary of this county actions. Obviously, March 16th, we declared a local emergency as a county. March 19th, the county office is closed to the public. The 23rd, our EOC open and is still open today. Also, on the 23rd, the governor closed schools for the rest of the academic year. March 25th, King George Sheriff's Office started a elderly assistance program with pharmaceuticals and different things. March 27th, first citizen in King George County confirmed COVID case. March 30th, governor issues a stay-at-home order. And March 30th, also, we launched a King George information hotline and email. So we want to give you a little bit of updates as we go through. We've got just a few slides here and I'll turn the next one over to Chief Lynn.
Thank you. In reference to the hotline, as of today, we've had 13 calls to the hotline and 70 emails that our staffs interacted with citizens. And some of the questions ranged, questions about how to get COVID-19 testing, questions about the stay-at-home order, also questions about the grocery stores and when they are open, what stores are open and any special hours for senior citizens. And we gathered that information and we related to the citizens as quickly as possible and answered all their questions. The chief mentioned the numbers. This is screenshots I took off of VDH and Maryland's Public Health webpage that showed the numbers and the breakdown of the localities. And the chart in the upper right-hand corner is from Rappahannock Health District, which breaks down each locality, new cases, the patients that are being isolated at home or in the hospital, how they received their test and patients that were in the hospital that were discharged out of the hospital. So we're tracking a lot of data. Fortunately, a large percentage of these cases, the patients are doing really well, recovering at home, very few of them requiring, you know, long-term hospital admissions. So that's the good information out of that. Next slide, please. All right. So when we met to come up with our battle plan for the response to the COVID-19 pandemic, it's really based on four big pillars, if you will, with the county, Fire and Rescue and also the Sheriff's Office involved in that. Public information, having a concise way to get information out to the citizens with your KG Alert, with the website, with social media and use supervisors that have Facebook pages help us push that message out. Government services, maintaining the central government services for people to interact with government officials, pay their taxes, you know, building permits, those kinds of things and doing it in a manner that's safe for the public and also safe for the county employees. Public safety, the 911 response, screening the calls when someone calls on 911, gathering all the appropriate information when Fire and Rescue and Law Enforcement go to the scene, they have the information and wearing the appropriate level of personal protective equipment and handling all those aspects with that. Emergency management, another pillar of that involving all the players in our emergency management plan into this event. County staff, you know, we've spent two years training and refining our plan, bringing in, you know, employees from this building to help support emergency management and it's worked really well in this event. So those are our big four pillars. Next slide, please. This is our dashboard and this is being published on the county website. And we're pulling information from official sources, CDC, World Health Organization, VDH, Maryland Public Health, and we're putting all that information there. And this is being sent out from my office out to all the department heads, senior staff. And we also now have the version that's going to be published on the website. So we update that right now every Monday through Friday, every business day. And the tempo picks up and we need to do it on the weekends too. We can do it on the weekends. But it's one-stop shop to get the latest information, number of calls we've run in the last three days and also the number of calls that we consider to be possible COVID-19 cases where we use a higher level of PPE just to show some trends and show some data. Regional activities, business information, BetterMed location in Fredericksburg is doing the curbside COVID-19 testing, those kinds of things we try to capture. Next slide, please. So some of the things we've been doing in our EOC, this picture right here is us having a teleconference just the other day. We are, we're tracking, as the chief mentioned, these cases all throughout the country and especially, you know, here in Virginia and Maryland. We're providing data to Virginia Department of Emergency Management. They want to know our burn rates for PPE and all kinds of information so they can put all that together and see what they can request, equipment they can request. We're answering any questions that any of the department heads have about this event and, you know, measures to take to protect their staff, participating in conference calls at the, you know, at the state level, at the regional level and even at the local level. Ordering PPE, personal protective equipment. We just completed the process to do a large order for, to restock our N95 masks. You've seen on the news that they're in short supply. And we partnered with the larger localities in Northern Virginia to make one big purchase. We're tracking our costs. We did get a disaster declaration for this event. So we're going to eventually get to the point where FEMA and VETM want to see our expenses and how we can justify that to, when it comes to be eligible, some of the, maybe eligible for reimbursement, that we have all that data, all those documents, all those invoices together to show to VETM and FEMA. Air information hotline that we've started and we've staffed that and also using county staff for that and that's worked really well and we're managing that out of our EOC also. Coordinating volunteer groups. One of the things we got requesting to help the schools with their lunch program and we were able to partner with LifePoint Church to get them involved with that and that's helped a lot and fulfilled their need and also for the groups that want to help volunteer to give them a mission to do. Also, there was, the county entered in a regional agreement with the local governments to share resources if needed, you know, to help all the other governments respond to this event. And while we're doing that, we're also, you know, putting fires out, running EMS calls and see the graphic right there in the bottom right, that was a thunderstorm that blew through today. So we're tracking that in the EOC and we're getting, you know, our thunderstorm warnings, lightning striking information. So our normal emergencies don't stop happening because of this. Next slide, please. Our public messaging, this slide was from last time we were up here speaking to you, but it was worth putting it back in this presentation again, where citizens can go to get information. to get information. Our Facebook page, King George Fire and also the Sheriff's Office Facebook page, we mirror as much as we can so make sure that the message gets broadcast out to as many citizens as possible. Our KG alert, we're using that a lot. So citizens that are having, they have trouble with their KG alert, please let us know, we'll get it fixed. And of course, the county website. Next slide, please. So messages for the citizens, what they can do to help in this event. You know, the government has a 30 days to slow the spread and, you know, that, that's very important. The social distancing, if you're sick, stay home, avoid large crowds, non-essential travel, all that stuff is, is, is working. And we're going to continue to do that through the duration of this event and hopefully you hear the flatten the curve and, you know, knock down those cases and hopefully get past this sooner rather than later. And follow official, official information, especially on social media. Everyone's an expert, but we encourage citizens to really follow what the government's putting out, the CDC, Department of Health, what we're sharing and also what VETM is putting out about how to protect your family, how to respond to this event and how to recover from it. Next slide, please. Here's our websites, the addresses for all those websites and also our, our link to our Facebook page, King George Fire. Next web, next slide, please. Any questions? Oh, chief, go ahead.
Just, just as a point of interest, kind of give you an update. As of today, our crews have had, have responded to 22 potential COVID patients that had the symptoms of COVID. We had, had a little break over the weekend. It hit hard yesterday and this morning we had two walk-ins to Company One that drove up within five minutes of each other. So this is, as you can imagine, takes a lot of equipment. It's a, you know, certainly our folks want to be protected. So it's, you know, we, we have changed some of our protocol, some of our procedures, but we're at a point now from everything that's being told to us, we are going to assume if a person has any fever, any shortness of breath, any difficulty breathing, that they will, that they have the symptoms of COVID-19 until proven otherwise. So we are, we are staying fully protected. Obviously, we don't want to under protect ourselves only to find out an hour later that they, or two days later that, that they've been exposed to that and, and we have to take measures. We did have one employee that did have some symptoms of fever and, and general illness. That kind of raised a level of, of an alert. We did receive some good news the other day that his COVID-19 test did come back negative. So that was a, that was a good sign. But any, any questions that we can ask? Yes, sir.
I have a question. So the dashboard, I love it, okay? But I do have a problem with it and it's not with you guys, okay? Testing used to take 10 days. People would get tested, they'd get the results back. 10 days later, you get notified there's a confirmed case, okay? We're not finding out when these people are recovering. I'm not seeing these people being taken off the rolls. So the numbers are going up and I don't see anything coming down. It's not that difficult and this isn't you, but this is definitely geared towards some other entities. I need to know what the recovery numbers are for, at least for my citizens, okay? If there's people, I'm, I'm not aware of anyone having COVID-19 for a month. It might be out there. I'm not a doctor, but my understanding is the cycle isn't that long. So people that have been diagnosed two weeks ago and the test results took 10 days for them to get, we should have some recovery numbers. And I noticed on the dashboard, you allotted for that information. We, we need to get those numbers and start finding out what, what is the recovery rate starting to look at and give our citizens a full picture. Because right now, there are some people that are looking at this and saying, oh my God, the numbers are only going up and up and up. I mean, we need to approach this rationally and calmly, but with all the information at hand and we can't do that if we don't have all the information at hand. We need those numbers. So anything that could be done to get those numbers out to the citizens and let them know that people are in fact recovering from this, I would greatly appreciate that. But for the job you guys are doing, amazing. I saw two helos land in close proximity to my house over the last two days doing airlifts out, okay? KG alerts blowing up, I got the active 911. You guys have been busy and with the resources you have and having to deal with this and running an EOC, it's amazing. It, it's actually inspiring what, what you guys are able to do. So thank you very, very much.
I had a quick question. Obviously with the current situation going on, it's very taxing, it's taking a lot of your time. What about more traditional cases that you respond to like structure fires or EMS to vehicle accidents? Are you seeing those go up, seeing them go down? Is it staying the same? Is it same kind of workload with all of this current emergency going on as well on top of it? Or is any of it declining or increasing to some of those other things? More people at home, more incidents going on?
Yeah, you know, that's a, that's a great question and, you know, it, it, it appears that it's pretty steady. I, I wouldn't say it's unusually busy. I mean, we, we typically have peaks and valleys of, you know, some days it's, it's a handful of calls. Other days you make up for it by getting four in, 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 in a half hour. So it, it, you know, it just, haven't seen anything trending yet. If, if we're in this, still with the stay home orders, you know, this time next month, it, you know, we, we could hope, you know, probably see some trending at that point. But haven't seen anything, I mean, you know, like Chief Lynn had said, and that's a thing I've, I've, you know, I've discussed with Dr. Young as well, as well with others, is our normal everyday business has not stopped because of COVID-19. We're still responding to, to house fires. We're still in wildfire season. That doesn't end until this month. We, we've had some significant brush and woods fires that we've responded to. You know, we still have people with broken bones and, and all different types of medical illnesses, strokes and overdoses. And these things happen and, and it, it certainly just adds to the, to the stress, stressor environment of, of dealing with certainly a global pandemic on top of it. So, you know, it, it, you know, that, that's what we're kind of seeing is that the normal calls certainly are not going away. And, and Mr. Bush, to, to your point, I certainly agree. You know, that's a lacking that, that we're not even seeing it really at a good national level from getting from a true vetted source. I've heard as recently as this afternoon that we had over 20 some thousand in Virginia that's recovered, but I don't see that reported on, on through VDH. You know, we have put the request in from our, our regional area health district. Those are numbers that we would like to track so we can, we can show and compare that difference.
Thank you. I really appreciate you guys' professionalism. Thank you for taking care of all of us.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I ask a couple of questions? Thank you. First, I want to say I love, love, love the dashboard. Thank you so much for doing that. Really useful tool. So can you confirm for us, and I think I'm reading it right, when you're reporting your numbers in King George County, you're using the data that Rappahannock Area Health District is providing us daily, right?
That, that's correct.
So at times, I just want to make sure the public understands that is differing from what Virginia Department of Health is putting on the state website. So we're still tracking nine here locally from our health district, but it says 10 on the website.
That, that's right. And what, what, what the accurate number is, is what's coming from the
From the local office.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And, and we have, we have noted that those discrepancies. We personally have brought it to their attention as well as others and the, the Virginia Department of Health is aware of that, that discrepancy. Typically, we, if we saw a discrepancy, we would see it be ours are higher, but theirs are lower. But it shouldn't be theirs are higher and ours are lower. So there, there's some disconnect there and they're working to remedy that. But, but the numbers that we're, that we're providing are the accurate numbers from the Rappahannock Area Health District and, and that's what, that's what's being posted on the dashboard.
Gotcha. And then one thing with regard to, you mentioned using some volunteers to help the schools distribute lunches and so forth, so I really appreciate that. If you find later that you need some more bodies, I was on a YMCA call right before this meeting and they are going to be hiring back some of their staff through the paycheck protection program. And since they're not offering, they're not able to offer the programs that they have been, they are willing, they may be willing to divert their staff to do some community service type projects. So if you all have a need for that, please keep them in mind. I'm also being told they're working on scheduling American Red Cross blood drive at every branch. So you'll probably be getting some more information about that going forward. So thank you all. I have a question. Is Sheriff Giles still online, sir? Are you online Sheriff Giles? Can you hear me Sheriff?
Yes ma'am, I am. Yes ma'am, I am.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to say thank you to your department as well for all that you're doing. Question for you, I'm, I'm hoping maybe you're seeing a decrease in motor vehicle crashes because there should be fewer people on the road. I don't know. Can you speak about that at all?
Yes ma'am, there, there definitely is a decrease in the motor vehicle crashes over the past couple of weeks. And I've also recommended that the deputies slack off on the traffic stops as well, but the, the crashes and the traffic as a whole is, is definitely decreased. Yes ma'am.
Well, that's good news in a way, I suppose. And then my other question though, are you finding that you're running more calls for service for things such as domestic disputes or any of that type of call for service? Because let's face it, people are home a lot more together and maybe they don't want to be. Can you speak to that at, at all?
I, I would have to agree with Chief Moody as far as everything's been kind of status quo. I ran the numbers for the last three months and we are, in January, we ran 29 domestics and in March, we ran 26. February was, was definitely lower than the other two, but it, it, there's no real huge spike of cabin fever.
That's good news too. If I could just ask both of your departments in your messaging that you continue to put things out, not just physical health, washing your hands, social distancing and so forth, but mental health resources that we have available to the community, domestic violence resources, child abuse resources, because let's face it, people are going to be cooped up for a long time and we might run into some other problems. So just my two cents, thank you to both of your departments for everything you're doing to keep us all safe and healthy.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am, we, we will, we will definitely put out that service, you know, for the people that are feeling cabin fevered and with the depression. So I'll get that out tomorrow.
Thanks very much.
Mr. Stonehill, before I make comments, do you have anything? Did we lose him again?
No, he's just muted at the moment. Hang on.
I'll give him an extra second.
He can go ahead ma'am. You can go ahead ma'am. We're going to try to coordinate with Mr. Stonehill and unmute his microphone.
All right, well, I'll chime in real quickly. I want to thank our Sheriff's Department and our fire and EMS for all they do and I love, I do love that dashboard and I, I wish we, we could have more of that data offered, especially as a lot of through traffic. People that live in other areas, they come and shop at Walmart or they come over the bridge or they might work in our community and they go somewhere else. So if somebody has that, they can then, you know, spread it to a lot of other people. So having more of that data so people are aware is really vitally important. And I just want to thank you as always for all you do. Do we have Mr. Stonehill?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, go ahead.
All right, there you go. Chiefs, I just wanted to say thank you very much for all that you guys are doing. I think about the crews every time I hear the veterans. I, I think about those guys. So I certainly appreciate everything that you all are doing. And I'm also going to jump on where Mr. Bush was saying, if we can really, you know, concentrate on getting us recovery rates, you know, that also gives us, you know, information and, and if we can get that out, you know, as maybe some, you know, a little bit of sunshine on this, except, you know, outside of all the doom and gloom that we're hearing, if we can get some recovery rates, that would be great. Not sure how to, how for y'all to do that, but if you could and to be able to share them with us, the board and also with, you know, the sheriff's office as well, you know, gives everybody a little, you know, brightness in their day.
I would 100% agree with that.
And just also wanted to say while Sheriff Giles is there on the phone, you know, I think about you guys all the time and, you know, worry about all the guys and, you know, if I can give a shout out for Lieutenant Bronson, his wife and say thank you very much for having them make those masks for you guys. You know, they're not the greatest, but you know, every little bit will, yeah. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, real quick, if, one thing I want to add is, you know, the goal of this dashboard, and I mentioned this because several of you had said you liked that, that product. The goal of that was to have a one quick snapshot of information that we're pulling together from multiple sources. Chief Lynn gets all the credit for that. He's the, the, that was, that's his work product. So, and he, you know, certainly everybody's working as a team and, you know, under these, these challenging times. So we're going to try to get that recovered information that, that, that is, hadn't fallen on deaf ear, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Shout out to Chief Lynn. All right, Mr. Stonehill, before we close this meeting, do you want to give your board report?
Sure, if I can.
Right ahead.
I think that I was doing some research here on line meetings, has done an up, which I wasn't privy to, about muting and unmuting yourself. So that's why I'm doing it here via phone. So let me find the board report. Besides talking to all the constituents and some people who are calling and email, answering everything, back on March 25th, I called in on a town hall with, with Rob Whitman and Doctors from the Riverside to hear the latest info on what our area is doing to fight the COVID. Then when everyone else, we did, we called in and the rest, a few of us called in and spoke, or listened to the White House briefing that same day. Tuesday, March 31st, I attended our second budget work session via computer, which worked very well. I spoke or heard from Dr. Benson about the school's budget and I spoke, or heard from Dr. Benson about the school's budget, and obviously, all of our budgets, including the state and counties and everybody's budgets, are going to have to be redone from where we were. April 1st, called into another town hall meeting with, at Mr. Whitman's office, and they had a guest speaker from the SBA, and they talked about loans for businesses to help with the impact of being shut down. Then logged into a Facebook town hall for the Mary Washington Hospital Virtual Town Hall, and heard a very interesting town hall from their chiefs of operation and chief medical officer. Thursday, the 2nd, I called into a NAACP COVID-19 conference, which was hosted by a Dr. Stubbs, along with numerous health experts that were on hand. They also included a great booklet on influenza and COVID-19 that was put out by Dr. Stubbs, and it's probably the best information that I have seen so far. I mean, it's everything from, you know, the flu to COVID to everything else, and it's a very long PowerPoint presentation, and it had everything to do with the virus, how to submit claims for your insurance, and also goes into, you know, the importance of a healthy life, eating, you know, vitamins and eating well to have your own immune system do its thing to fight this. I do have a copy, if anybody's interested in it, they can reach out to me and I can forward on to them. April 3rd, called into another town hall meeting at Mr. Whitman's office, and then yesterday, along with Mrs. Cupka and Mr. Granger, we're at the King George Sheriff's Office for the dedication to the K-9 kennel to retired Sheriff Steve Dempsey. And since he was our first K-9 officer here in King George, it was great to have the kennel dedicated to him and all his service to the county, and all of his years and services greatly appreciated. And that is, that's it. I can get back here, okay?
All right, do we have a motion of adjournment?
A move to adjourn until April 8th at 6:00 PM in the boardroom.
Second.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Bush seconded.
For the discussion, I just want to make everybody- What was that? Now, just to say for discussion, I just want to make everybody aware online that after this meeting adjourned, in five minutes, we'll reconvene for the service authority meeting. So with no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any need? Sheriff O'Sai, the board of supervisors meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone that attended, in five minutes, the service-